Any questions on any items on the agenda? All right. The first item is on staff updates is the Cease the Harm Audit Report. And Dr. Noriel Armstrong is here to help us out with this. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Chairman Newman and Commissioners. I'm here to introduce Dr. Adrian Carter and the Carter Development Group to share their comprehensive Cease the Harm Audit that they've done for the county, for the city. They presented last night at the Community Reparations Commission and shared their findings with the commission. And so the commission now will take those findings, review those, look at those, and see how they may choose to, if they do, to incorporate them into their current recommendations that they're working on. And then those will come to us to then bring back to you. But they're here today to share their findings and give you their thoughts on their audit. So I will turn it over to Dr. Adrian Carter and the Carter Development Group.
Thank you, Dr. Noriel. Hello, good afternoon, Chairman. To those of you on the commission, thank you again for having us. We have spent the past about seven to eight months conducting this audit, looking at how to cease the harm that is impacting the African-American community. So we're going to go through a relatively brief overview of our findings and our recommendations for your awareness. We have a team, we had a team of about 14 individuals, 12 individuals who worked on bringing together the aspects of this report. Today, I am joined by Dr. LaShawna Wiggs, who's going to be my co-presenter. She is the project manager on this report, on this process. And she's also the economic development researcher with her background in business. I'm also joined by Adrian Hibbert, who was also her co-researcher in economic development. So today, I'm going to talk to you about our approach and methodology, our thematic observations, some of our key harm findings, and then our key recommendations. As you know, the purpose of this presentation or the study was to conduct a comprehensive examination of county and city government services, policies, procedures, outcomes, and its impact on the African-American residents in Asheville and Buncombe County. To present, we know that this is the first known audit of this nature that's been funded by municipal and county government. And this audit creates a baseline assessment that works toward the cessation of harm. And both governments have caused harm and indicated their willingness to address it using the findings of this report. Our company, Carter Development Group, we are focused on being strategically inclined, solution-oriented, and community-focused. Our mantra is that it's not the problem that counts, it's the solution. So we're always being driven by solution-oriented approaches. And we're also empowered by what is called the LSA model, which is an inclusive community building approach. Now, throughout the process of this study, what we came away with, we assessed 30 metrics across the seven impact focus areas. There are the five main impact focus areas of education, economic development, criminal justice, housing, and health and wellness. And then we also assess an additional two areas of the internal workforce and also the equity offices between the city and the county. With that combined seven impact focus areas, we looked at 30 metrics that we assessed. And the results of that was 108 recommendations that we've developed throughout the course of this process. And throughout the process, we also looked at more than 1,000 artifacts, data points, information across the seven IFAs. These are just some examples of the type of metrics that we looked at. In criminal justice, we looked at recruitment and the training procedures. We looked at data on traffic stops and searches. In economic development, we looked at small access to financing, government procurement and contracting. We looked at the grants process also. In education, we looked at early childhood developmental milestones and looked at how the grant programs are being funded, tracked, and what are the successful outcomes that we would like to see. And so you also see the same thing similarly in healthcare and wellness. We looked at access to healthcare, food insecurity, wellness services. And in housing, we assessed what the housing dynamic, market dynamics are. We also looked at regulatory compliance and access to housing and the types of support around the housing between both county and the city. Throughout this process, we also use a particular methodology called the Racial Equity Harm Assessment Compass. And as you see, you see opportunity, knowledge, representation, and access. And if you look at that acronym, we come away with OKRA. So for short, we call it the OKRA Compass. And what it does is it takes a look at opportunity, and opportunity in that we ask the question, what are programs, what program services, resources, and pathways that support the quality of life for residents? And then when we understand what those programs are, we then ask, well, how do people know about those programs? So what outreach campaigns to raise awareness about those program services and resources exist? Then we wanted to know who participates, who activates, who gets engaged, who are the benefactors of those programs? And so we looked at representation. And then fourthly, we looked at access. And in access, we wanted to know what are the equitable access points for those programs? So for example, I'm going to jump to this slide here. So when we look at OKRA, if we were to use access to healthcare as a metric, as an example, just to demonstrate to you how this particular methodology operates. When we say what opportunities provide access to healthcare, here in Buncombe County with their public health services, you have clinical services, the mobile unit, wellness fairs, cancer screening, paramedicine team, and the community health workers, just to name a few. So those are the opportunities that exist to provide access to healthcare. But then we want to know who utilizes those services. So at that point, we want to know what is the headcount and the demographic breakdown of utilization? Can we have that by race, by gender, by sexual orientation, by ability, by whatever those numerical quantitative metrics that we can identify for representation? And then for knowledge, we want to know, how does the city or the county inform residents about these healthcare services? And at that point, we're looking at mechanisms and effectiveness of communication outlets. So are you informing, are residents learning about what's going on with the news media? Is it social media? Is it the county's website? Are there flyers and mailers or in-person events? How are you getting the word out about those opportunities? And then lastly, we looked at access, and that access are enforceable mandates and practices. In other words, what policies, what guidelines do you have in place that provides, that says, this is how you access those services? What procedures do you have? What forms do you have to fill out? Are those forms in multiple languages to reach a wider net of people? Is there a cost? What are the locations or the time of service? Do you even have staff available to provide access points to those services? So that's how we use the OKRA model, or the OKRA Compass, throughout all of those different metrics that you see that we gave you a sample of before. So next, I'm going to talk about the thematic key harm observations. There are four major harms that we identified throughout this process. Number one is there is insufficient data-driven practices to determine the level of African-American participation in county and city opportunities, which is simply to say that as we went throughout the study, a lot of data are not being collected, or a lot of data is not being collected in the areas that we felt were important to have the data so that we could understand representation and access for the opportunities that you have. Number two, there are insufficient evaluation practices of grant recipients. So a lot of grant programs are run through the county and through the city. But especially if you look at, let's say, early childhood education, how do we know those programs are being effective? So what evaluation, what assessments do you have in place? And so there are some, but it's not sufficient enough to give us the type of information that we would need to see that the programs are actually being as effective as we would like them to be. Number three, there is limited affordable housing supply for purchase or rental across the county and city. And most importantly, it's compounded by a lack of cohesive strategy among county and city officials and key stakeholders in order to address the limited affordable housing supply throughout Buncombe County. And fourth, from an internal workforce standpoint, we identified that county and city government staff lack wide-scale racial equity training to create baseline knowledge of equitable practices, which is to say that while some of the department heads or some higher-level positions within the county government officers have received some training, there is not wide training across all employees when it comes to racial equity training. I'll take a quick pause if there are any questions at this time before we move into some of our recommendations. For, we've developed, as we mentioned, about 108 recommendations. So today, I'm just going to give you a sample of some of those recommendations that we think are, that have impact for both the CRC and for the county moving forward. So under criminal justice, we talked about the importance of creating and implementing skills assessments in the form of measurable scenario-based recorded training. And what that means is instead of just training, for example, on implicit bias, there is a training school of thought and there is a training program that looks at training on implicit bias by actually recording officers in a scenario and then observing the recordings and giving feedback based on the response of the officer in that particular recording. And we train around implicit bias by putting them in situations that you have, whether it's racially or gender-different individuals in that particular scenario. And then we put the officer in that scenario, ask him to respond, and then we record that, and that's how they get better information on where their biases are showing up. Number two is to improve recruitment strategies to proactively include a more diverse applicant pool of Black detention officers. When we looked at the workforce demographics, we found that there was a gap in Black detention officers and that more individuals can be hired in that particular capacity. Next, when we looked at education, in education, number one, hiring or contracting an education subject matter expert to determine which grant applicants are best suited to meet community and student needs by giving insights on pedagogy, current research, best practices, and whatnot. The idea here is to use a subject matter expert to help guide the grant process as you look at learning outcomes and the learning developmental milestones, especially with your early childhood education grants, so that we could have a better system of identifying the metrics we want to track and determining what success looks like. Number two, we talked about conducting a full-scale equity audit to assess academic achievement outcomes for students in grades K through 12. And this is more of a general recommendation that deals more specifically with the school board. But when looking across the board at education and the particular data that we saw, there's a lot of disparity in the data that we said, maybe it can be best if we had a full-scale equity audit in order to determine exactly what some of those issues are. But the current data as is shows that the learning gains, especially for the learning gaps and the achievement gaps for African-Americans within the school system are lower than should be. In health and wellness, number one would actually go across the board for all of those IFAs that we looked at, where we talked about developing more robust data-driven practices. But number two and number three stand out as simple but important opportunities. There is a B.C. Alert system run by Code Red that is on the website for Buncombe County. And so we thought that it would be prudent to ensure timely dissemination of crucial health-related information by adding a public health notification as part of your B.C. Alert system. Number three, there is establishing a dedicated transportation service for expectant Black mothers, ensuring access to prenatal appointments, birthing classes, and hospitals. And that was also derived by some of the information that we found in the community health assessment and the community health improvement plan. In housing, as we mentioned, one of those key harms that we observed, so the recommendation is developing a collective affordable housing plan, a partnership of county, city, and other stakeholders in order to identify funding sources, timelines, and goals, and also to look at how you all bring developers into the county and into the city to specifically address affordable housing opportunities. Again, the goal around this is how does the issue become addressed through a collaborative effort between the county, city, and other stakeholders? Looking at the internal workforce, with the internal workforce, and we talk about, number one, adopting a new interview panel process, what we found is that there is a high potential for there to be racial inequities in the hiring process. And so we're recommending how to make some adjustments to the process by adopting what is called a search and screen committee approach as opposed to an interview panel approach. And that will create some distance between the hiring manager, the applicant pool, and the screening committee, so that there could be more equity by way of, through use of the search and screen committee when applicants are applying for positions and they begin the interview process. And number two, establish data reporting of key HR metrics. What we found was that the HR is not necessarily tracking relevant internal workforce data in order to see if there are any type of inequities. And so we are recommending that they address that by identifying key HR metrics. A simple example would be, we asked the question, how many hires have you had that are internal versus external? And there was no answer to that, or at least at the moment, at that particular time. That was an unknown piece of information. But if we know that we're hiring more people internally, if we're doing more internal promotions as opposed to hiring more people from the outside, or if we're hiring more people from the outside as opposed to internal promotion, that can tell us that we maybe have some training gaps that, in order to create more hires internally. So that kind of information would let us know, do we need more training? Do we need to create leadership programs? Or do we need to have mentorship-type of programs? Again, a key metric that can tell us how to make shifts within the organization. And then, and it's not that these are difficult metrics to assess. These are actually, a lot of it is just baseline information that we should have a good idea of. Before bringing my colleague up to share the additional recommendations, when we looked at the equity inclusion in human rights offices between the city and the county, we found that there needs to be more collaboration with human resources and the equity office toward the end of developing a racial equity engagement survey. And whether that's done collaboratively with HR or just through the equity office, developing a concrete racial equity certification program for those internal workforce comprised of internal and external development opportunities. What we would like to see here is first, surveying staff to understand what their experience is within the workplace. And to our awareness, that has not been done for five years or has not been done, or has not been done at all. And then from there, being able to develop programs based on the results of that particular survey. It's important to gain information from the staff on what their experiences and their sense of belonging is within the workplace. And then, which should be number two here, racial equity training, again, addressing the issue of wide-scale racial equity training, is looking at how to develop a plan so that all staff can be trained at some baseline level on racial equity. Move forward, we've also developed what we believe are five high-impact inclusive community building recommendations. And these were what were presented to the Community Reparations Commission last night. The five are as followed as you see on the screen. And I'm going to ask Dr. LaShawna Wiggs to come up and to walk us through these five. And that will close out our presentation.
Good afternoon. Last night, we did present to the Community Reparations Commission. And these are the five areas that we thought would be high-impact. And we'll start with the first one, designating the legacy communities as historic districts in response to urban renewal. That does a few things. It gives legal protections and regulations to safeguard the community from gentrification. It attracts visitors and helps stimulate the economic development of the community. And then it allows the communities to qualify for grants, tax incentives, and funding for historic preservation and revitalization. It contributes to social equity and justice by acknowledging some of the past injustices that have taken place, promoting racial reconciliation and empowering the marginalized communities. The next is increasing accountability that's linked to school district funding. Here, providing additional oversight and requirements for faculty to receive culturally sensitive training or sensitivity training, requirements for culturally, sorry, culturally relevant pedagogy and textbook selections, and then requirements for core subject area faculty members to reflect the student demographics that they serve. Our next recommendation was in terms of economic development, where development of a procurement industry and utilization dashboard. This is something similar that's used at the federal level. It provides transparency, provides accountability, and helps shows project procurement and opportunities and track government spending in specific areas, in industries, and sectors. It implements a user-friendly kind of interface for the users to search and filter for relevant business opportunities within the government space. And then it encourages businesses in terms of readiness, competition, and promotes vendor engagement in the procurement process. Our next recommendation is more of a community-led effort, where it's the establishment and development of a Black Chamber of Commerce. This is a nonprofit organization that would be modeled after the National Black Chamber of Commerce. And it really gives a collective voice to minority businesses in the area. They provide tailored support to assist Black-owned businesses in developing their business at various levels of their organization, from startup to building and growing their enterprises. And then lastly, to Buncombe County, to conduct a disparity study. So looking at the data, evaluating some of the historical procurement data and identifying any discrepancies or disparities that may exist in the procurement process in terms of awarding contracts and the demographics of the groups, specifically focusing on minority-owned organizations. Developing race-conscious goals and policies. So based on the study's findings, develop some clear measurable goals and policies that address any of the disparities and help promote diversity in the procurement process within Buncombe County. And then formulate strategies to actively include minority-owned businesses in procurement. That includes mentorship programs, capacity-building initiatives, and then targeted outreach efforts that allow you to connect with small business owners who are minority-owned. And I'll bring Dr. Carter back up for questions.
So thank you again. That concludes our overview of our racial equity study, the comprehensive audit for Cease the Harm.
All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And for your work on this. Commissioners, questions?
Well, I would say thank you first, and the presentation was excellent with good details there. So I'm curious, out of all this, if you were prioritizing, I mean, you've done a very good job of prioritizing within each area, but was there anything in particular that really stood out to you that you felt like would be most impactful?
A couple of things stand out. What Dr. Wiggs showed at the end, when we look at, when we look at the Black Chamber, which is not a county-specific matter, but that would be a community-led matter. But you look at a disparity study, you look at the industry utilization dashboard that we talked about, is, the idea there is to create an ecosystem of business development within the county. So when you put those together, you have a system where you now have minority businesses that, one, are able to track the historic spending of the county, so that that now helps readiness. If we know that the county is purchasing in these particular areas, now I can take my business. And if we didn't do that before, now I could begin to get ready to do that. So that increases readiness. If we also have a chamber, we now have a support system that's in place. And then the chamber can also work with the county through grant dollars in order to fund additional readiness opportunities and growth and expansion opportunities. And now you have a more, hopefully, a more thriving economic system that's having a much better impact on minority businesses. So those are one of the things that we see that can really begin to move as an ecosystem and better for everyone, right? Everyone can win through that. I think the other thing that also stands out is the amount of funding that goes into your grant programs, especially take early education, for example. There is an opportunity for you all to be more specific about the type of outcomes you're looking for. Right? It's one thing to fund it, but then what does success look like after funding it? And that's where the recommendation around having a subject matter expert work with your folks in order to do that, you know, might be prudent. So now we have some metrics. We're working with these grant recipients to say, this is what success looks like. And some of that is in place, right? It's not that it's totally not in place. Some of those things are in place. But we feel that there are a lot of gaps there that can be filled and will just improve the system. Welcome.
Just a couple of questions, partly about the process that led to the recommendations. So some of the recommendations are for ideas around, you know, what could, you know, what are initiatives that might be beneficial going forward? Like the Chamber of Commerce idea. Another one is like the designation of historic, making more neighborhoods be designated as historic districts. And so part of, my question is, what kind of community engagement kind of led to those specific ideas coming forward? Or to what extent, you know, in terms of the team that you brought in, kind of look at the community, look at what's, the issues we're wrestling with here? And kind of the idea sort of came from your organization based on, you know, things you've seen be successful in other places, best practices, things like that?
Our team did definitely looked at comparables and looked at best practices across other cities, counties within the U.S. A number of those, and those specific details are in the actual report itself. But for example, in criminal justice, we looked at other law enforcement agencies, especially around measurable, the recorded measurable training, to see what they were doing and how the success was. And then we put a link to that information in the report so that you all are able to use that as reference. As it relates to some of the other recommendations, we did not do specific community engagement in our process by going out into the community. We relied on the information that we gathered from the staff. We received, as I mentioned, over 1,000 artifacts. And we held a series of cohort and review meetings with each department and talked through the information that we received. And based on that information, and then add that to best practices, when we look through the lens of ceasing the harm, we identified recommendations that we thought were a good fit specifically toward that end. So when we look at historic districts, for example, the comparatives, and we have a write-up in the report on that, whether it's Native American communities or other communities that have received that particular designation, the opportunities that it has for tourism, the opportunities that it has to stop or to limit what gentrification looks like are some of the things that are also mentioned in the report. So we do have comparables around that, but we did not necessarily go out into the community. We used the resources internally that was provided to us. us.
Okay. So for like, for those two examples, then like on the Chamber of Commerce and the historic districts as like specific examples, in terms of, and I realize this is, this is still a draft report at this time, right? So, or is it still a draft report? It says draft, but you made the present, it is, it's still a draft. Okay, so it's not the final version, but, so this should be thought of as like, here are some specific ideas that might be interesting to look at, to address some of the challenges that we're wrestling with in Asheville and Buncombe County, Historic District, Chamber of Commerce, but not necessarily, at this point in the process, does this indicate that there's a determined level of, you know, of community support for necessarily taking those specific objectives forward? That part of the process hasn't been done yet. This is just based on the, the folks that y'all have talked to and your organization's perspective on, like, we've seen
Yes.
Be some benefits from this in, in other situations.
Absolutely. The next step, the next step would be for the CRC to take this information, and then include what they feel is appropriate, similar to what you're saying. We like this idea, we think this works well, and we want to include it to move forward in the next part of their process. But there's another half to this. The other half is directly in, looking at the county, is that there are things, whether it's been conversation with, with the county manager or otherwise, that says that, well, here are some things that we don't necessarily need the CRC to weigh in on, in order to make a shift or a change. These are things that should be done and can be done, and that's a conversation that you all would have in that next level.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or thoughts? So, thank you for this amazing report. I really appreciate that. It gives us a lot to focus on, and kind of hone in on. Would it be possible to follow up and get some more information if we wanted to deep dive, for example, on education? What specific areas that the recommendation advises that we improve as far as subject matter experts for early childhood education, for example? Like what, I'm, I'm curious what that looks like. Is that a survey of someone who does this at a national level? Is this consulting our local folks who are in North Carolina and understand the landscape that we're in in terms of what state funding looks like versus what our specific need is, need is in Buncombe as a community that's kind of like a hub of a lot of what's happening in the West? Do you have any insight on what that would look like, or how we could dive into that data a little bit more?
Yeah, that, we could definitely have more conversation around that. My, my media thought is, at least our team's thought, when we talked about bringing in a subject matter expert, is first and foremost is bringing in someone who understands education and what educational outcomes look like, from a, from an educator-learner's perspective. Next, I think what you're saying, when you talk about the landscape locally, statewide, and nationally, should also be taken into consideration. But the first step in that process is ensuring that you're bringing someone in with an education background, someone who has taught, who understands what developmental milestones are as a starting point, and then we could bring in those other aspects that you mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. I have a question on the education component as well. Some great points here on accountability. Knowing how the North Carolina General Assembly is constitutionally responsible for funding our schools, and counties are having to step up more and more, there are some recommendations that the county should step up even further. Do you have any examples around the state of North Carolina where you all have recommended this, and how counties have functioned in terms of increasing funding in light of the General Assembly not doing their job?
Not specific, the, the, the recommendation around education is not for the county to increase funding. It's to increase, it's to increase jurisdiction, or, let me rephrase it this way, to attach a certain level of accountability to the funding that they are receiving as it relates to the capacity of cease and harm, right? So the lens of cease and harm is, begins to raise the question, well, we're giving you the funds, but we don't have any jurisdiction in how we fund, after funding the school board, or the school districts. But if I want to cease harm, and I notice when looking at data from the school board, for example, African-American students have the highest contact of referrals with law enforcement, yet African-American students are one of the smallest parts of the population within the school district. Why is that disparity happening? How do we address that disparity? So at that point, the recommendation becomes, how can we increase certain things that we want to see in place, in addition to the funding that is already being provided to the school district? And that's what the intent of that is. How do we create more accountability from a racial equity, cease and the harm approach when it comes to the school board?
Okay, thank you.
My only question is related to historic preservation, and perhaps no one in the room can answer it. I don't know. It's mainly related to my lack of understanding of historic preservation law, but I think that, that recommendation is interesting. But I guess my understanding is that existing historic neighborhoods in Asheville, in terms of regulation, just involve design standards of existing housing stock. And I guess I'm just wondering, practically speaking, how, if I'm correct in that, just practically speaking, how a new designation of a historic district would help with gentrification of those neighborhoods? I, I must be missing something maybe?
Well, typically, what happens around the, the country, when you look at that particular type of designation, even, there are designations around preserves. And so because the land is considered a preserve, right, it means you can't tear it down, you can't go roll something over it to, to build something. So the historic designation, whether by land, community, or housing, begins to provide a certain level of protection. And that's what the interest is in. Again, so looking at it with a racial equity lens, if you have these communities that have largely been lived with and, and have the experience of Black and African-American residents, but then they experience gentrification or urban renewal, historic designation then begins to set up a fence around, or a protective fence around the potential of that happening. And so that's the spirit in which that is written, is how can you create a certain level of protection for those neighborhoods? One, some of them have already been gentrified, but even in what you have, want to salvage, or want to, or how you want to continue to cease harm, is then that becomes an opportunity for us to assess those neighborhoods and begin to provide some type of protection through those historic designations.
Yes, this, I mean, are there any concerns that historic designations could contribute to gentrification? I mean, isn't there kind of a critique of how these designations, you know, increase construction costs, increase renovation costs? Because it is basically kind of a, I mean, it, it does prevent housing from being torn down. And if we'd had this decades ago before we went through urban renewal, it would have done a ton of good, right? But that's sort of already happened, right? So gentrification is the bigger problem we have today in terms of just like the economics of how the neighborhoods are changing. But is there any concern around how, you know, kind of creating these higher sort of aesthetic standards that neighborhoods have to adhere to might affect the, kind of the economic livability of these neighborhoods?
I, I think it's a decision, I think it's a conversation and a decision that we get to map out, right? I don't think it's static in terms of these, the precedent becomes set because it has this particular, this particular designation, and this becomes a standard. I think collectively we determine what that is, right? By identifying, if we chose to go that route, and identify that a particular community is, is marked as his, as a historic district, the next step would be that we define what we want that to entail, right? So I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a blanket matter by saying it has, it has the, the demarcation of being a historic district, therefore, all of these things immediately fall into place. But the spirit of it remains that it is providing a level of protection, which is the, the landscape that we're coming from, is how do we stop harm from occurring within those communities and create protective measures? And then we can go to the next level of the conversation and, and identify what those specifics are.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Any other questions for now? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you again.
Our pleasure.
All right. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the internal audit update. And Matt Baker's here to help us out with this.
Good afternoon, Chairman Newman.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, County Manager Pender. I'm Matthew Baker, and for a little over two and a half months, I've been in the role of interim internal audit director. Before I launch into this update, I would just like to thank the Audit Oversight Committee and staff for their support, but also their extreme patience with me in this process. Earlier this morning, I met with the Audit Oversight Committee, provided them this update, and I'll be giving that to you in brief this afternoon. When I met with them initially in January, I had a list of bullet points of initiatives that I wanted to achieve by our March 19th meeting, which was today. And today, what I did was I went over that with them, and I've been doing the same thing here. So, we, when I, when I first started in internal audit, we had two vacant internal auditor positions. I had hoped to come to the committee this morning and tell them, hey, we have both those positions filled. Came very close. We have two offers pending, and I look forward to closing the deal on those as soon as possible. We do have training plans underway for those positions, and ensure that they have familiarity with our, not only our systems, but risk assessment procedures, and ensuring that they have their continuing professional education, their CPE credits. And county management has been very generous in offering to allow me to work with budget to find additional training dollars for FY24, in addition to the budget proposal that was put forward for FY25. One outstanding item that was left from the previous internal audit director was the closeout of the cash management audit. That has been closed out after completing the supervisory review. Happy to take questions on that if there are any. However, just kind of the long and short of it is, thematically, there are some cash handling procedures that would benefit from greater policy to govern those, provide a floor, enterprise policy to provide a floor for those procedures, and then more specific departmental policies that would allow to tease out places where the statutes require a little bit more strict approach to cash handling. And again, I can answer questions if there are any. Additionally, internal audit is working hand-in-hand with compliance and risk. We are trying to shore up shared systems, shared processes, and how we can push forward with the implementation of the COSO framework within Buncombe County. To that end, that's a lot of long-term, only way of saying, these three things. The Employee Ethics and Reporting Line, the EERL, we have improved the security for that. The security posture was not where it, it really needed to be, and that is now in a much better place. There's a hard and fast line between what internal audit uses it for, and who can see that, and then, for instance, what other folks can see, maybe in the employee relations side of that process. And then we continue to map out system processes and build standard operating procedures. In addition, there is also the public whistleblower mechanism, which is let's talk right now. We are looking at, and exploring options to move that within our NAVEX system, which is what the Employee Ethics Reporting Line works out of. So that is saw within one single system, there's more fidelity, there's less eyes on it, it maintains privacy and anonymity to, to the highest of standards. And then we have worked with our vendor, was falling in and is galvanized, now it's diligent, to schedule some training which will coincide with the onboarding of new staff beginning in April, to make sure that we can provide as much tracking and reporting and audit trails as that system actually is capable of performing. So those are, those were initiatives that I set out with. This is where we are at this moment, is a bit of a status update. But in addition to that, there's also work that will be moving forward on for quarter four. Primarily, again, since it's a team-building year, as I've come to refer to it, the onboarding of new staff, including that systems training and risk assessment procedures training, and essentially getting them to know the stakeholders in the departments around the county, the folks that they'll be working with, asking questions of and interviewing. However, the, the, the big bulk of what they're going to be working on for the remainder of the quarter is going to be the annual risk assessment, FY25 risk assessment. Because of the vacancies of the positions in FY24, some components of the FY24 audit plan were left incomplete, those will be taken back up within the confines of the risk assessment, engaged appropriately, to see what the new audit plan will be. Now that audit plan, the FY25 audit plan, may push forward a little bit into Q1 of FY25, simply because we'll be a little bit behind just getting staff onboarded. But at this time, that's the end of my presentation. If there are any questions about this, or the cash management audit, or anything else, I'm happy to take those.
And I will add that we also were able to do, conduct interviews this morning, so actually, we'll need to add something on the agenda this evening, because we have a recommendation coming forward for an audit committee member, which we have needed for quite a while, so we're excited about that.
We need to add it to the agenda?
This evening.
Under boards and commission appointments?
Yes.
Either add it to that agenda or to the next. It's whichever is.
Do it tonight.
Yeah. And we definitely appreciate Matt's good work of coming onboard and really getting things moving in a positive direction. And we're looking forward to the two new staff members coming on as well.
Here, here.
Great. And just, just while we're on that, so, you know, when we get, when we get to boards and commissions discussion, that's pretty informal, so I think we can just discuss that at the time. I don't think we actually need to change the agenda. Just remember to bring that up when we get to it.
Okay.
That's okay. Great. All right. Anything else? Thanks, Matt.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the LOBS 2024 Finding Resolution and Notice, and Melissa Moore is here to help us with this. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. So today I'll talk about just the introduction of some items that will be, and coming before you in the following meetings in April. So a findings resolution is going to have several items that will be accomplished within that single resolution. One, it will set a not to exceed amount for your limited obligation bonds of 81.5 million. It will include a reimbursement resolution for 26 million. We'll also modify our 2015 deed of trust, and we'll also state that we will be submitting the application to the local government commission to issue these bonds. So looking at our not to exceed, the not to exceed is set at 81.5 million. It will include projects for your Buncombe County schools, Asheville City schools. It will include county projects, as well as some specialty vehicles to purchase, as well as the cost of issuance. So at the, and the 26 million of reimbursement, again, it will be reimbursement for funds and expenditures that we have already spent, so it'll reimburse those with bond proceeds. Majority of those reimbursements will be for school projects, but will include some for county projects. So with the deed of trust, and the 2015 deed of trust, the county has two different deeds of trust. So this deed of trust, we're aligning to be more collateralized with school assets to primarily issue bonds attached to this as collateral to fund school projects. So we'll be removing the Health and Human Services Building from the deed of trust, and we'll be adding two project, two properties from Buncombe County School. And so far, the deed of trust only has Asheville City School assets within that deed of trust. So TC Robertson High School, as well as North Buncombe Middle School will be added. So the deed of trust is, act as your collateral package, so similar to when you have your home mortgage, that, that home, that the home itself serves as collateral. So this is kind of essence what that does, is it backs the security of issuing those bonds. So next steps, so at our April 2nd meeting, I will introduce to you a, a future resolution that will provide authorization and set values for both our GO bonds that we'll be issuing in May, as well as the limited obligation bonds. We'll also ask you to take action on this resolution that I just described for the findings resolution, as well as holding a public hearing for the limited obligation bonds. We'll come back to you April 16th meeting to ask you to take action and approve the issuance resolution for both the GO bonds and your limited obligation bonds. Are there any questions?
I don't think so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Last item is execution of deeds, and Michael Fruit has this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll just tee this up by pointing out, the county holds title to a lot of properties, vacant properties, small parcels that were foreclosed on years and years ago. Lots of them are very small, cut off from streets, DOT right-of-ways. Most of them are unbuildable. We act as a land bank for county schools, especially up near North Buncombe. And when we've gotten together And when we've gotten together over the last few years to see what we do with these properties that should be surplus, we've only, we only really have 10 that look like they could be developed. So that brings us to two properties we have here. So it's already up. We have one, this is the parcel ending 5918. The county acquired this property, as it is the other property I'm going to talk about, from the Buncombe County Board of Tax Supervision. That was a former agency locally and in other counties that did the tax foreclosures for the local governments. That board was abolished in 1984, and when that happened, the county took title to all these properties that had been foreclosed on and not resold over a span at that point of, of over 50 years. So now we're 40 years on from that date. This is down next to Walton Park. The county actually looked at this pretty closely about six or eight years ago to see if it could be developed for affordable housing. So Nick, if you can go to the picture for 5918. That didn't pan out when, when the planning staff looked at it and researched it. Nick, whenever you can put the photo of 591, there we go. Up on Walton Street, you'll see Walton Street, two streets up north of that parcel that's highlighted, that's where water and sewer are closest to this particular property. So you'll notice the property that's highlighted, the one immediately to its right, and down south of Takahati, you see about six parcels there, which are also undeveloped. I think this just highlights that if you have property in, in Asheville in particular these days, and it's not developed, it's for a reason. And for these, it's just not economically feasible to get water and sewer to these properties for development. Also, from Oakland Street running to the south, it's, this property is very steep and drops off. We also took this property, besides planning staff and myself, we had a panel, including parks and rec, equity and human rights and tax, and we reviewed this and tried to squeeze it again to see, can we make use of this property? Could someone like Habitat, for instance, make use of this property for affordable housing? And it just concluded, it is just not economically feasible to develop. So Allison Danes with Parks spoke with her city county park counterpart, and as you see, this is right next to the Walton Street Park, and they would like to have it. So with that, let me take us to the next parcel ending 2141. This is over in West Asheville, West Asheville Park, Brevard Road, running through the residential neighborhood between Haywood and I-240, and about halfway through there, and this is back at the end of one of those streets. And go to the next parcel, please. This one, this one has similar problems with it. It does not lie well. You see that a neighbor has a bunch of used and old vehicles abandoned, and it's next to the parking area and access for city public works into that park. The city has likewise said that they would accept this park. We went through the same process of exploring, could this be developed? The same issue with adequate water and sewer and how the property lays, and I believe also that Habitat had been consulted, and they just saw it as too problematic to try to develop. So what we have at this point, and you can stop the images, Nick, that's fine. I've drafted, and if the board would like, we can put this on a regular agenda here in the next couple of weeks, or on a consent agenda. No more formal action is required of the board than a resolution to give these parcels to the city, and it'd be a dedicated use to be attached to their public parks. So I have drafted and sent to City Attorney Brad Branham, and he has approved language that says it's the intent and agreement of the grantor and grantee that these properties will be dedicated to a public purpose and be used along and attached with their public parks. And there's a joiner for the city mayor and clerk to attest the consent of the city to take and accept those properties in that regard. Open any other ideas, but that's our best recommendation as to what to do with these properties. There, there's several other properties, as I mentioned, that look like they might be developable, and we could bring those back to the board here at some point after we look and speak with affordable housing partners to see if they could do anything with them, and if not, we would have to come to the board and ask that you declare them surplus and then put them out for bid or whatever use you might think might be appropriate.
For the second parcel, is that landlocked?
It is landlocked.
Okay.
And I, I tried to squeeze through that and see what happened, but there was a, an AJ Jackson got foreclosed on in about 1945 after he bought that parcel and the little diamond-shaped one that was north of it, I think in the early 30s. And it looks like he landlocked himself by conveying that little parcel to the north of it, and then for whatever reason, maybe he couldn't develop this parcel like we can't develop it, and then it got foreclosed. But it, it is landlocked. And we talked to the city about, hey, could, if we tried to develop this, would you give us a right of way in perpetuity through your portion of the park to do that? And they said, you know, that's just not really workable, and I think that was an understandable decision on their end. So just asked you, would you like this on a regular agenda or on a consent agenda here in a couple of weeks?
Agenda is fine with me.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all.
All right. That's all the items on our agenda, so we are adjourned and will reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting.